I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call with Alderman.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Diddleman.
Here.
Alderman Gah. Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Weigant. Alderman Elmore. Alderman Wigington.
Here.
And Alderman Barfield.
Alderman Gah is excused. Roll call to department heads, please.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Tom Corr.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn. Human Resource Director Sherri Faber.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Belvo.
Here.
Health and Housing Director Bob Sabo.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Royce Carlisle. Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
And Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Okay, Leander's on vacation, he's excused. Royce is on vacation, he's excused. Kenny just walked in the door, so we don't have to excuse him. And do note that Jay Goddard is here on behalf of Wastewater for Royce. I think that covers everyone.
Yes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, just a couple quick reminders. We are being videotaped and audiotaped as always. And Alderman, and guests, when we do speak and you're called upon, please use the microphone to remind me. Also, if we have an emergency, if we have an emergency to evacuate the building, forest, smoke or fire, please go to one of the exits and go outside. And we would appreciate it if you'd go over in front of the auditorium so that we could kinda ask you if the people that you came with are all here and kinda make sure everybody that you know was in here is out. If we have a storm, remember when you're in this building, we ask that you go downstairs, one of the exits, and go to the inner hallway where there's no windows or inside the bathroom to get away from any flying glass. With that said, we're going to be opening public participation in just a second. When I call on you, please step forward to the microphone and please give your name and try to keep your comments to two to three minutes. And preferably on something that's on the agenda or that's pertinent to Belleville. So at this time, I will open public participation. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name's Alan Ebbin, I live at 754 Henry Road, Belleville, Illinois. And I just have a couple of comments, issues. The first one is on 11C3, the motion to increase the trash collection by $2. I saw this on the agenda, then I went into the packings. And my concern is, where are the numbers that justify this? You know, I read the newspaper today, I saw that, I don't know, whatever, I just read the newspaper, I'm telling you. That $3 million was the intake and $3 million was the cost, so it sounds like last year. That was a, you know, how did we come up with $2? That's all I'm asking. You know, there should be a pretty simple layout, you know, these are all the costs, these are anticipated increases, these, you know, is it $2 or $1 or whatever? And comparing it to, you know, all I saw was comparisons to our neighbors. Well, I mean, that doesn't, that's not why we should go up to $2, we could just be like them. So, that's my concern. I would propose to not prove this unless there's numbers. Some numbers that justify whatever increase there is, you know. Pluses against minuses, future, next five years, whatever, you know, it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you, sir.
My second comment is, I have, this is just to let people know, and I will be talking to Mr. Gregowitz after this, because I made a call to him, but Adam's gonna have to get ahold of him. But there, I believe I've done a report of concern, I've talked to the IEPA, the St. Clair County Soil and Water Conservation District, concerning the lack of erosion control, sediment control, stormwater prevention at the Hofbrauhaus Shrine construction site. There's basically, in my opinion, none there. Every contractor, every developer, everybody that does anything in this city, county, state, United States, you must do certain things, and nothing's happening out there. And I've made some, and I was told to talk to, also, I've talked to the IEPA, up in Collinsville, it's a lot of people. And things are not moving, I just need to know what's happening. That's all I'm asking. What's going on, what's gonna be done? And it's not about the site, the visual site, I don't care, it's just, there are rules and regulations that everybody has to follow.
A little later on in the meeting, I'll probably address some of that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Michael Hackberg, I want to talk about the agreement on tonight's agenda about using TIP money to improve a property which is adjacent to the TIP district. First question is, is this legal? Thirty years ago, that property owner made the decision not to participate in the TIP. For the past thirty years, the property hasn't paid one dime into the TIP. What justification is there to take TIP money from other property owners who own a property which is adjacent to a TIP? TIP district money is supposed to be spent within the TIP district. And I don't believe it's legal to be spending money outside of the TIP district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
... on his today's agenda, 11-32, Cascaskia Engineering, get $27,400. I wonder, the competency of that outfit, I'm beginning to wonder about it. I think they done around $10,000 worth of work out at the bicentennial park, or Calvert Park, whatever. And I think the first good rain come along and washed it all out. In the paper today about this bridge, about it's going about as bad as the Brer Hall. It looks like it's gonna be a, they're gonna have work out there in the vicinity of the way it's going. And Cascaskia Engineering had a hand in that. And I used to think, I used to think people took it home as kids, were very good people, wanting to help homeless kids. But stupid me, many do just for the money. They get money for doing that, I didn't. About a good many of them do it just for the money. As with most public servants in the Metro East, are mainly in it for the money and benefit. If you're a Democrat in this town, it seems it's hard to get arrested. Punching young girl in the face and dragging her by her hair, finding a shotgun in some kid's face and shooting at him as he goes away. I think all of these monthly field good words is just a bunch of BS. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Very, now I'm gonna close public participation. We're gonna get on to the regular portion of the meeting. And we will start with an opportunity to recognize someone who has been a good friend of Belleville for a long time. So as I step up to the microphone, I would ask our friend Michael Buhrhahn to step up to the microphone with me. Sorry, Mike, I didn't put my coat on for you.
Funny, funny guy.
I still call him mayor because many of you will remember that, how many years were you mayor of Swansea?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
And, but, Mike is retiring the end of this month from the Metro East Parks District, Park and Recreation District. And for the last, I gotta look at this, since 2004, you can be better, right? And since then, he has been a very good supporter of many of the projects that we have submitted and asked for consideration. And our parks, many of them, as you will hear in just a second. And our city and our trails have benefited from his support and his dedication to the region. So today, upon the near retirement of this gentleman, we are here to honor, whereas today, we are honoring Michael Buhrhahn. On the occasion of his retirement, in tribute to his many years of dedicated service to the Metro East Park and Recreation District, whereas since 2004, Michael Buhrhahn has served as the Executive Director of Metro East Park and Recreation District, partnering with the city of Belleville and surrounding communities throughout St. Clair and Madison County, Illinois, to improve parks and develop trails. And whereas over the years, Michael Buhrhahn has been instrumental in his role at the Metro East Park and Recreation District in assisting the city of Belleville with grants for Bicentennial Park, Ladderman Park, Huff Park, supporting city events including Tour de Belleville and the Gingerbread Run, and assisting with the bike trail maps and trails, period. And whereas from 1981 to 2001, Mike served on the St. Clair County Transit District Board. And whereas from 1985 to 2003, Michael Buhrhahn served as mayor of Swansea, city of Swansea, our neighbor. And whereas from 1990 to 97, Michael was on the East-West Gateway Council of Governments. And whereas from 1992 to 1994, Michael Buhrhahn served on the Site Selection Committee for St. Clair County Metrolink. Whereas in 1999 to 2000, Michael Buhrhahn served as President on the Illinois Municipal League and served ten years on the Illinois Municipal League Board of Directors. Whereas in February 2011, Michael Buhrhahn was appointed by St. Clair County Chairman Mark Kern as Treasurer of Bi-State Development Board of Commissioners. And whereas Michael Buhrhahn is also the President of the Epilepsy Foundation of Greater Southern Illinois in Belleville and the President of the Epilepsy Foundation of Southern Illinois in Mount Vernon, covering over fifty counties. Now therefore, I'm Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the city of Belleville, do hereby join the members of the Belleville community and congratulate Michael Buhrhahn on his retirement in grateful recognition for his dedication, his service, and his continued partnership for so many years. Mike, it's a long overdue thank you. You were a good neighbor and partner when you served as mayor. I know as the IML with me soon getting more involved, I guess I had maybe a little bit to, I'll let you know up to this next year if I'm thanking you or not, but I think so.
He may regret this.
He's been one of the past presidents that certainly has encouraged the board to consider my nomination for that position. But in recent years, my park staff and many of us, Jason Poole, and so many of them have had nothing but accolades about your cooperation and your involvement in helping us craft and answer questions when they're writing these grants and when they're getting interpretations on things. You've been a big help to help the quality of life in the city, and we thank you extremely.
Okay, two things, first of all, for me to be standing at a city council meeting in Belleville, given one of my previous jobs, is distinctly one of the greatest honors I'm ever gonna get in my life, let me tell you. Secondly, Danielle Langston stood in this very spot, and I am honored to even be standing closer where she was. She's the person that deserves a lot of hope for the future here. I gotta thank Debbie and Jason for the great work that they do for the Park District. I was gonna get electrocuted, I didn't wanna touch anything. And I, all of my friends here, I mean, everybody's been great to work with. I'm glad you put all this stuff in whereas, it's because if I ever do look for another job, I'll take the stuff off here for a resume, but I don't remember half of them missing. So, thank you all so much. Belleville's a great town, it's a great place to live. And I'm just honored to be here, thank you so much.
Thank you, mayor. Those are the fun parts of the meeting. At this time, we go on to number eight on the agenda, approval of the minutes. And I'd ask the city council for your consideration of approving and filing the minutes from June 5, 2015. Motion by Alderman Pusa, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Wigington, do I hear discussion, additions or corrections? All in favor of accepting and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we move on. Claims, payroll, and dispersments. At this time, I would ask for a motion to pay the dispersments and claims of $1,428,365.43 and the payroll of $883,957.46. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Anthony. Any discussion on the claims or payroll dispersments? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries, we go on to reports. I'd ask for a motion to accept and file the treasurer's report from May 2017, the statement of cash and the investment report. Almed by Alderman Diddleman, second by Alderman Consilla. Discussion on those reports, accepting and filing? All in favor of accepting and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We go on to the oral report, streets and grades, Alderman Wigington.
On behalf of the Streets and Grades Committee, I make a motion to approve SCI Engineering Incorporated, Consulting and Engineering Services in various locations, MFD, TIF funds, so moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Wigington, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Diddleman, do I hear discussion on this motion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries, we go to, and ask for a motion from administration to approve a solicitor's license request from Britton, Trutz, and Kelly Sol, how's that, can you say it?
Slodja.
Slodja, and Global Education Concepts. Do you have it on your thing written with the spelling? Do you have a, do I hear a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Steele, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer, do I hear discussion on any of these? All in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Finance Committee, Alderman Consilla.
I make a motion to approve the five-year GS, I'm sorry, GASB 45 proposal from MWM Consulting.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second? By Alderman Pusa, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries, Alderman Consilla.
I make a motion to approve engineering proposal for $27,400 from Cascaskia Engineering Group for Bicentennial Park OSLED grant engineering.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Pusa, do I hear discussion? Let me just say real quickly, if you may remember, this grant got stalled by the state two years ago, Debbie? And, and we had to stop, so the engineering and everything couldn't be finished because we didn't know what they were gonna do, but the governor's office stopped all OSLED grants. So, we got notification two, two years ago that we could proceed, and we already had some invested energy and dollars, and so we proceeded. This is what it's taking to finish up the engineering so we can move forward. We have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further questions or explanations, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries, Alderman Consilla.
Make a motion to approve increase in trash collection fees, $2 monthly for regular and $1 monthly for seniors.
We have a motion by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer, discussion? Alderman Ovian.
We have immediate need.
Could you please use your microphone? Thank you.
Your Honor, we have immediate need for six trucks, four of which are critical. We have four gently used trucks that cannot go ahead and withstand further use in our community to go ahead and pick up trash and yard waste. And $2 and $1 will not go ahead and satisfy that. We basically have those vehicles that I've mentioned, and they are, basically the, the very first one is the rear loader for a trash truck that was purchased, that was basically made in 1994 when it was built. And we purchased it on 3/4 of 2005. We still have it. It will not go ahead and withstand any further use. That is the trash truck. We've got three trucks that was also gently used that we purchased, that are used for yard waste. These are trucks that basically need tremendous amount of bodywork. We've got two totes that basically are getting older, and they were purchased new back in the year of 2007. And those trucks are getting older. In order to go ahead and suffice, we need more money than just $2 and $1. There is no other community other than ours that provides strictly a differential between seniors and regular. We need to go ahead and bring into play right now four trucks immediately in order to avoid any further $300,000 years for improvements. It's not gonna work. I don't wanna have to come back next year and ask the people again that we need more money. In order to do this, we are not telling the people the truth.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Weigant.
Mayor, I agree 100 percent. I have the list I gave everybody here on the amounts. $1, $2, how much it generates $306,000. $3 and $2 would generate $476,000. $4 and $2 would generate $612,000. And $5 and $3 would generate $778,000. A new truck today is probably $175,000.
A one-man truck is?
Okay, I figure if we go with the 5-3 and 4-2, we can buy three new trucks. Over a two-year period, I think that's how they base it, you know, that'd be $100, that'd be $300,000 a year. Now, consider this, you're taking $30,000 off each one of them trucks because of maintenance costs. If you're parking out right now, it's now you're down to $210,000 for what that truck's costing you. These trucks, if anybody's ever gone down there, and I go truck all my life, it's ridiculous. Trucks are falling apart. We need new trucks, this is basic, we might have to buy and pull it sooner or later. We just can't buy used trucks all the time and keep on sticking money in them. Let's buy new.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions?
Mayor, I'm really not opposed to, I think we have really good trash pickup here, it's economical. But I don't think we've seen any really hard numbers yet to really justify an increase. I'd really like to have Jamie sit down, put something together for us, and really look at the cost that is costing us and the revenue that we're generating. And then we'll do a cost analysis, and, because I don't wanna have to come back next year and ask for another increase a year after that. Because if we're gonna do it, let's do it and get it done. But just to throw out numbers of $2, $3, $4, I just don't feel comfortable right now. So, you know, I would like to see maybe not move on this tonight. We're not gonna shut down the sanitation department tomorrow. But if we can get some good solid numbers, take a good hard look at it, and make a decision and say, this is what it is, this is what we have to do, and then we can justify it to the people. Because I'm getting calls from people on fixed incomes, and even a dollar, not everybody can afford a dollar, not everybody can afford $2. Those of us on the council here, speaking for myself, I can afford it, I can afford that. But there's a lot of people in the city that can't. So, if we're gonna increase the fees, I just wanna be able to justify it and have some hard fact numbers in writing, and we can say, this is what it is, we have to do it. Thank you.
Jamie, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I will. Can you step up and I wanna ask, or we'll answer a few questions? I think Mr. Bitner, you were at, I know you're not on the finance, but maybe you were there. And Jamie went through a litany of questions that night, and I think some of you weren't there, and I think maybe we can help you. We, we have not raised, as is stated in the paper, was correct. Trash has not been raised in seven years. And that's partly due because we felt, as you stated, there's a lot of our citizens that were hurting during the recession, continue to have concerns, haven't raised seniors in eight years. But that's probably the only utility any of us have in our home that truly hasn't had a raise in seven or eight years. Amarin, Water Company, AT&amp;T, the cell phone you have, or whatever, everybody goes up, unfortunately. Jamie, I think we talked the other night about some of the expenses manpower-wise, and I think some of the stuff we're not even charging for. We know now, in this year's budget, Jamie, first of all, to clarify, we do have one truck in the budget, correct?
Correct.
And that's for a new one-man, $175,000 truck.
Correct.
And a couple of years ago, as Mr. Weigant was mentioning, well, actually, is it five or seven years now, Jason? When we bought the two, seven? Seven years ago, we bought the two used Mack trucks, and we got seven years out of them. And they are worn out today, I won't deny. And I had asked Jason about 30 days ago to start looking, besides the one that's in the budget, to look and see if there was such a deal like that. Because these yard waste trucks, I think that's what they're used for, they take pretty good beat. And I told him that we could find some trucks that we could get five years out of at the price. I think we paid $30,000 apiece for those?
Twenty.
Twenty. That might be a step for us, I agree. But Jamie, how many trucks have we bought in the last number of years new?
We've been trying to do at least one to two every year, and we cycled them out. The hardest years of the recession, we couldn't. But probably in the, almost eight years since I've been here, we've done at least six or seven new ones.
I was gonna say, looking back, I think I counted over 10 since I've been mayor. I'm not saying that's enough, but I mean, I wanted to defend the fact that we have been trying, we went to the one-man truck during that time, and we have been trying to upgrade the equipment. It is expensive, but I will say this, even with new trucks, maintenance going to those dumps with tires and certain things, is, grinding up the yard waste still gets into some of those hydraulics, et cetera. And even a new truck, there are issues that develop because it's just the type of business we're in.
And we also, we do a large item pickup, which does cost $45, but we are throwing a sofa or large mattresses in the back of these trucks that have a detrimental effect on some of these trucks too.
But we do know that when we offer that service, we get a lot of these items out of the alleys and out of the backyards, and we keep the city cleaner. There was a comment made at the finance meeting, why don't we privatize? And we've looked at privatization, but it'll just hurt the citizens. We will lose control, we will have to lay off employees, which, we got good employees. And that has never been an option under this administration, because it just doesn't add up. If you look at that chart that Jamie gave you, neighboring communities, even though we may be the only one that is doing trash ourselves, when you look at the situations that they've contracted for, every one of them is paying more than what we're paying. And they don't have the amount of service we have with trash, yard waste, and recycle. So, we have an excellent service, we have, we have great employees picking it up, and they're good, they're good to some of the seniors or some of the disabled. We're not advertising, but they, some of them go above and beyond the call of duty when it comes to the way they treat our customers, and that's what we want. Jamie, what else about the financial? We, yeah, we probably, over the years, probably could've toughened things up, and I understand that we don't wanna come back right away next year, but I also understand, almost, most of us on this council here today, consciously, nobody spoke up in most of us on this council here today consciously, nobody spoke up and said, let's raise trash last year, the year before, or whatever. And I personally, when I spoke up in finance, I think we need to get back into it in a way that we're not going back too too much to the taxpayers. It's going to happen now. Mike, we need some more next year? I think that depends on what the state of Illinois continues to do with us. If we see revenues drop like we've seen them this year, I cannot sit here honestly and tell you that all different fees and services might not have to take a good, strong look because the state of Illinois, on taxes that Jamie explained to you last week, we were down about $1,200,002 in those various components last year, what we had traditionally received every year consistently. Particularly, income tax was down a half a million. So Jamie, what else do you want to add, since I called you up here?
You know, I got several calls over the last week, some visits from Alderman, everyone asking what my opinion is. And while I can tell you numbers, I don't get the calls from the residents like you guys do. So all I can do is give you facts and figures. I know Alderman Tyler today sent me some figures that I looked over. Essentially, right now, we're bringing in approximately $3 million with our trash fees as they are. Right now, we're spending about $3 million with our expenses as they are, knowing that, you know, landfill fees are going up every year. The landfill that approached us is that, you know, we've frozen your rights over the last seven, eight years, and we can't do that anymore.
We just got that notice several weeks ago.
Yeah.
That just came close.
We also know that union contracts come May 1st are another 3%. We know that trash trucks, obviously, we need some. You know, the one a year or so has been holding us over through rough times, but we need more. In my opinion, the two and the one will raise about, well, that's not our opinion, it will raise about $300,000 in a year, which will cover these increases for at least over the next year. We talked about maintenance of trucks. While I have budgeted approximately $290,000 this year, last year was close to the $350,000 for maintenance and supplies for the trucks. So that's never getting better, as long as we have an older fleet. If we raise fees and use some of that money to more definitively turn over the staff every year, a couple trucks, you know, that will not go away by any means, but it will decrease. So $2 and $1 was my recommendation in trying to weigh our expenses, making sure they were covered, but also giving a lot of thought to what the residents can hopefully afford and not going over.
In answering to, hold on one second. In answering to Mr. Bittner's question, though, to stall it, it's going to take a full year to gain that whole $306,000. So I think we've got to continue, my personal opinion is, I think we've got to continue to study this thing. But to get started with the two and the one that Jamie and I proposed to the finance committee, in our dialogue back and forth for many days and weeks, I think it's a start that's reasonable and fair, and I think we've got to continue to analyze this, and we can always, I know what you're saying, but I do think we are remiss. We waited too many years. Alderman Wigginton?
On any given day during the summer, or during any trash pickup day, how many trucks do we actually have on the street?
Jason, how many trucks are out any given day?
There's usually five, five, ten, eight trucks, three yard waste trucks, two pre-recycled trucks.
So 10 trucks. 10 trucks a day.
Okay. And out of 10 now, like I said, you've purchased about 10 new ones over the last 10 years or something like that.
Twelve years, probably, yeah.
So I mean, of that number, how many would we consider that are old and could be in critical condition?
I don't disagree with Mr. Wagon that we have, we have two trucks that are pretty dead, and we have two more that are near death. I don't disagree with you. Agree, Jason?
Yeah, we, our three yard waste trucks are really bad, and one of our rear loads and trash trucks is really bad as well on the fleet itself. I don't, sitting in the back of the room, what I don't want you guys to think is the administration has ignored sanitation department. Because if you sit here and look at our fleet list, you know, there's been, actually since 2007, there's been 12 sanitation trucks purchased.
And a new building.
And a new building, and a new pickup truck, and it all adds up. So I don't want you to come away thinking we, you know, the administration has ignored sanitation. It's just that these trucks take a beating, stopping at every house, stopping and going, and stopping and going, and carrying, you know, carrying 20,000 pounds of trash every day, and it takes a beating.
We do have one, as I told you, in this year's TIF budget to be purchased. It's a one-man truck, it's approximately $175,000. And I did authorize Jason to get busy and get looking to see if there was such a possibility of some decent used trucks that might help us with the yard waste. So I'm not saying we won't be back here. Folks, I'm not saying this solves our problem. I'm saying, once we got the notification of the landfill changes, we had to stop what we were doing, and you're always going from one situation to a next, and we had to say, okay, we've got to focus on this, we've got to get it to the council's attention, we need to do something. And we believe this is a good first step. Don't get me wrong, Jamie's not going to refuse to see more money coming in, but we're just giving you our opinion that there is still more to analyze, but we think the two and the one is a fair start. Nothing against those of you who are 100% correct. We do need more trucks. We do. But, you know, we also, we just ordered a new fire truck, and we're going to be, to keep our ISO rating, we're going to have another one in a year or two that's going to be at that 20-year mark. Is that right, Tom? 20-year mark's where we got a problem?
Yeah, I got one that's almost 40 and one that's a bit 30.
Okay, Tom, keep some of that coming to yourself. But he's got one that's almost 40 years old. That's a spare. But my point is, we have, we're not denying, we do have some things that need attention. We're trying with the state, $1,200,002 we're down in revenue here this year, folks. We're not denying the fact that Jamie and I have had more headaches and consultations back and forth about money than we even did during the recession.
Hey Jamie, at two and one, we're still at break even?
Well, what that does is it generates $300,000 over the next year, which will help cover maintenance, you know, the lease payments on a new truck, as well as the increase that will hit 5.1. So it does provide a little bit of cushion. I'm not going to say cushion, maybe that's the wrong term, because, believe me, we're not sitting on a lump of money if four of these trucks break down tomorrow, you know, we're going to have to cut.
That's what I was going to say. If four would break down tomorrow, as tight as this budget is, where's the money going to come from? God forbid that two, three, four trucks go down at one time. We haven't got that money in the budget. Where are we going to come to money, to keep this process going? How are we going to come up with the money?
You know, that's what we talked about at the finance meeting. In the past, when we were trying to not raise fees over the last seven years, when something like that would happen and maintenance would go through the roof, or when gas spiked enormously and we were over budget, we didn't come and raise fees, we subsidized those overages with other tax revenues in our general fund. Now, like the mayor said, that our other tax revenues are drying up, we can't subsidize this service anymore. So it has to almost be a standalone, or doesn't even be a standalone service that will support itself.
It's got to pay for itself. Yeah, it's got to pay for itself.
And I'm not going to, I told you before, and I'll tell you again, I'm not going to tell you that we're not going to have to come back next year and have this discussion during the budget time. But we just felt like, to be fair and reasonable, because this, I don't want to say it came out of nowhere, but when we got the notice, when Jason came in to me with the notice about the landfill about four weeks ago, I said, okay, we've got to stop and talk about this now. And so that's what prompted us recently. And then, when Jamie saw the final numbers on April 30th as to exactly what we weren't getting this year from various tax components from the state, that was the other major telltale sign that we have, we're on a course that we have to do something.
And keep in mind with landfill fees, we're talking about the price per ton going up. That will amount to itself about $15,000 annually increasing. But that assumes that our consumption is the same as it has been. Every year, consumption, the tonnage that we take to the landfills goes up and up and up. Obviously, people consume more, go through more. A lot recycle, and a lot don't. So not only is it an increase in the price per ton, but as consumption goes up, obviously, we have to cover that as well.
This is an interesting conversation. Yeah, we're talking about the point of view of the city. Let's look at some of the taxpayers' constituents. At two and one, that's $24 a year and 12 for a senior. That's a pretty, that's a pretty good deal.
At $2, it would be $20 for a regular rate monthly.
Right, okay.
Because it's 18 currently, so it would go up to 20.
Yeah, that's about, over a course of year, 12 months, it's, yeah, you would pay an extra $24. Right. So, but then $3 for two, for a senior, you're talking, going from 12 to 24 for a senior. And I know Alderman Bittner brought up about, you know, some of our constituents, and you're going, you know, $3, it's $36 a year. You know, both of those, two and one and three and two, you know, they're both pretty good deals. I mean, and I don't think we should be comparing ourselves to other municipalities. You know, we give a great service, and we want to continue to give that great service. So I don't know.
Anybody else spoke yet? Alderman, Alderman consultant?
I would support the $2 and the $1 because I feel that the people in my ward would be willing to look at it again, but they really want us to be as conservative as we can. And I think that's what the people in my ward will accept. Does that mean we don't look at it again in a year? But I think they want us to be as conservative as we can, so I support the two and one. Not that it wouldn't be nice to have more money and more trucks.
I don't disagree. Alderman Ovian was next.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are being very short-sighted here because we've got one more year before this state election comes about where we may see a change. What are we doing? We're not being honest with our constituents. We're going to have to come back and say, that wasn't enough. I don't want to do that. I don't want to go back and ask for more money next year. The minimum we should look at is three and two, only because we need vehicles that will not break down, that gently used are out of the ballpark. That doesn't work. You know, we've had these vehicles, that one in '94 that was built, we bought it in 2005, it's lasted more than what we should have had. It's rusted out right now. We cannot continue to use it. You've got three others that are in just as bad a shape. Are we kidding ourselves? We're lying if we tell the people that's all we need. Thank you.
Alderman, a little next.
Thank you, Mayor. Not to, you know, put any further delays before the vote takes place, but I think that Alderman Bittner brought up an excellent point there. I'd like to see the finance director and the director of public works get together and work up an intermediate plan, if you will, regarding what the costs are going to be, including both not only the landfill fees, but the maintenance cost of vehicles in addition to the salary increases that take place. I'd like to see a full schedule, if you will, of, you know, a plan put forth that is going to replace this fleet over, say, the next 03 to 5-year period of time, or 7-year period of time at the outset, or at the outline.
So are you saying do nothing, or are you saying?
No, I'm just asking for a schedule, okay? A cost analysis to be done, okay? So that we know not just where we're going to be after this vote takes place, but what we're looking at, okay, over the near term.
Well, I think Jamie and I agreed after the finance committee meeting in the past few days ago, where that, you know, there's more gathering of information that needs to be done, more questions to be asked. Like I said, we have to start something, so we can't. Alderman, are you there?
My thoughts are, if we've been getting, if we get another $300,000 a year, and we already have $300,000 basically for their budget, right? Do you think you said this year, and we went up to $350?
That was me, it's possible, right?
Well, what are we actually going to do next year? What I'm getting at here is, I think we've got enough money now, if we go two and one, to buy one more vehicle, and we have been buying vehicles all along, need to go, right? So on the average, we're probably going to get a new truck anyway. And with reference, new increase, we can get that second truck for this year. What is to get us halfway to Mr. Ovian's goal of four trucks? And we stay off our citizens, off their backs for a while, out of their pockets. So I think that two and one would suffice right now. And I'm 100% agreement with you guys looking some stuff up and giving us more facts. And as we go on, you know, especially by the end of the budget year, we have something to talk about, or if we have to reason, we should at that particular time. And if we don't, then we'll see what we can do, because we're still going to get maybe two trucks next year because of our money that we're increasing right now. So I personally think it's enough. Thank you.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is a motion for $2 per month for the normal customers, $1 a month for the senior citizens, which is 65 and old, correct? And that's the motion on the floor. We have a second. We had a good, healthy discussion. So if there's no further, if there's no further discussion at this time, I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Hazel?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Husa?
Aye.
Bittner?
No.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wagon?
No.
Elmore?
No.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Okay, what was the count? I know that I have it.
11 ayes, 4 noes.
11 to 4. The ayes have it, that was a very good conversation. And I will just say, I don't disagree with the fact that it'd be great to have more. We're going to continue to supply you more information. I think the challenge to Jason and to Jamie to continue to work on more facts and more figures is a must, and we'll have to look at this very carefully come winter time when we're doing the budget again this next year and take a real strong look at it. We move on from here, and the next conversation is Alderman, Cincilla, you have 11 C.
4. Okay. I'd like to mention that the following four motions have to do with money that was previously handled by the township, and that since we've taken over those, it's now from the general and community assistance fund.
Is there a problem if we would redo those together, anybody? Anybody? Alderman, Cincilla, why don't you read those motions as a group?
11 C. 4. Motion to approve grant funding for PSOP and ATS totaling amount levy for this grant, $37,000 from the general and community assistance fund. 11 C. 5. Motion to approve grant funding of $3,500 to Franklin Neighborhood Association for Summer Camp from general and community assistance fund. 11 C. 6. Motion to approve grant funding of $3,500 to SWIC Americor for 17th Street Neighborhood Association for Summer Camp and general community, from general and community assistance fund. 11 C. 7. Motion to approve grant funding of $10,000 to Basic Initiative from general and community assistance fund.
Motion, Cincilla, do I hear a second? Second, Alderman, Dillman, do I hear a discussion? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Husa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications?
May I ask you to read those?
Communications, 12A. Communication from Altoff Catholic High School requesting to hang four banners on light poles on the north side of Main Street in front of Altoff. These banners will replace the current banners. The displayed content will be, "We are faith, we are virtue, we are aspiring to achieve our personal best in all we do, we are Altoff." Communication 12B. Communication from Evidence Based Care for everyone to have their annual rally to approve birth and baby fare on Saturday, September 9, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to noon
Alderman Steele, do I hear a discussion? All in favor of approving the communication signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have no petitions, I ask for a motion. To read by title only, Resolution thirty-three oh four. Motion by Alderman Wigginton, do I hear a second? Alderman Ovian, second at motion. Any discussion, all in favor of, uh, reading that motion, that resolution, that motion by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Fourteen A, Resolution three-three zero four, resolution designating a developer for redevelopment of certain property in the TIF III redevelopment project area and adjacent properties, and declaring an intent to reimburse certain redevelopment project costs.
Do I hear a motion, do I hear a second? Second, uh, the motion was from Alderman Wigginton, second by Alderman Ovian. Discussion on this motion, pardon? Yeah, I think Eric, do you wanna say it's about, you know, we talked about this, I think there's a little misunderstanding.
This, this resolution is not obligating the city in any way financially, at this point, it's just basically an agreement to have an agreement and, and designating Mr. Hill's company as a developer for the project. The full development agreement will come through committee and council, so the details of the financials will, uh, come up then. Uh, there is a, two-part, two parts to this project, one is in the TIF, one is not in the TIF, and I think there's just a misunderstanding, and when this comes to committee, we'll lay everything out and how it'll, it's gonna work, but this really is a just resolution.
We're not, we're not proposing anything that's not appropriate here, it will all be explained in further detail, and it will all follow the law, you know, one hundred percent, okay? Any other questions?
Why, Eric, why do we have to have an agreement?
I think for, for, uh, the developer to move forward with some of his important parts, letting you et cetera.
Okay, so he, he needs to show.
This initiative resolution is an important step for him, and when you look at those properties that we've, uh, we've been struggling with for a very long time, we all view this as a very positive step, and it's, uh, as Eric said, uh, the risk is not on the city at this point, it's showing in good faith that we are gonna continue to work with this developer, because we see these two blighted properties as something redevelopment is absolutely a wonderful, wonderful thing.
So basically, this is gonna help him with his project?
It's certainly gonna help him move his project forward. Okay? Anything else? So I think we've answered those questions, and let's call, we have a motion and a second, let's call for a roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Husa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Motion carries. This time I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance number eighty-sixty. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Wigginton. Motion by, second by Barfield, to read ordinance eighty-sixty by title only. Uh, discussion, all in favor of reading by title only that ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Fifteen A, ordinance number eight-zero-six-zero, two thousand seventeen, and ordinance amending Title Nine, General Regulations, Chapter ninety-two, Health and Sanitation, Section ninety-two point twenty-two, Residential Refuge Collection Fee of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Bellevue, Illinois, as amended.
Do I hear a motion? Alderman Anthony, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer, do I hear discussion on this ordinance? This ordinance was drafted already based on the committee's recommendation, so it's in your packet as what we just approved, okay? Because that's what came out of committee. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Husa?
Aye.
Bittner?
No.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Ordinance passes. We have unfinished business, let me just give you again, um, Garrett and I have had some continued conversations, um, about the project at the shrine. As you, some of you may or may not know, may not have been watching this past two weeks since we met last, there has been a significant amount of progress. We had information today that, uh, was shared with us confidentially, but they asked that, said that we could share, uh, some of this, that, uh, considerable amount of work has taken place both outside and, and the outsides really started to pretty much meet a lot of their limits at this point, there's some other things that will be done, there's a few things ordered, uh, but they are hanging drywall, they are working, uh, the temporary, uh, HVAC's been hooked up, they are still waiting for utilities. The shrine and the engineer of the project are working with the Illinois EPA on the erosion concerns. Uh, I was told that they may be back at this, this next week or so. There has been improvements in their discussions where this has been stalled, that's pretty much all here, I can tell you at this point. I was told there's gonna be a very aggressive next two weeks on more work on the Hopper House, particularly on the interior, interior, and we should continue to see progress quite significantly in the near future, so I think they've certainly proved to us that, uh, we're having some improved communications, and they're gonna continue, but there's still a lot of, a lot of things that we're trying to, uh, uh, work through, uh, and, and as I told you many times, I'm not happy with the, uh, the fact it's taken so long, I wish it was done a long time ago, but there has been significant improvement since we met last, and I am convinced from our conversations again today that there's more, uh, more improvements going.
They gave us a two-week timeline, do you get a, do you have a lot of work done? Do you have to know, are they gonna continue to give us two-week timelines of what their, their process of comments are gonna be?
What we were told today is that their intentions are to continue giving us an update every two weeks, uh, but there is, uh, Garrett's been privy to a lot of other, um, in-depth conversations, trying to solve and discuss and be privy to, uh, some more of the concerns, as was mentioned here with, uh, the, the grading plan and other things, that is, is certainly, we can't, they can't start too soon to get back at it. I think there are some signs of improvement, what we're hearing is positive, can I sit here and swear to you? No, I'm very hopeful, and we have seen some positive, uh, some positive results, and we'll keep reporting to you what we're hearing. Communication has been better the last couple of weeks to Garrett and I, but they're very, uh, as much as the project has been struggling, as much criticism, they're very concerned about doing it any other way than this right now. Okay? Any other unfinished business?
Mayor?
Yes?
You had an update on City Hall?
Uh, City Hall, I just, uh, turned my article in for the, uh, newsletter, which should be coming out the first of, uh, July. Um, I talked to Mike Criss this past Friday, and, uh, since you took your tour, I guess you're in that group, um, he still says the early part of September, it should be complete. Now, there's a lot of work to do, as I was up there a couple of days ago, but they are also at that stage, now that they're starting to hang drywall, and they're starting to do some things, they're scraping the lead off the tower this week, uh, the roof has gotta put the, the cap around the second roof on the north building, but the roof, both roofs are now done. There's a lot of work that has been done, and, you know, a lot of the nasty work has been done, all the demolition, all the asbestos abatement, the HVAC is basically all put rough back in now, 'cause it's all new, 'cause it was all sweating and, you know, and dripping through the ceiling, et cetera, the condensation. I think we'll see this date, uh, of the first part of, early couple of days of September is still very much a reality, but I also know that they, uh, there's still a lot of work to do, so I'm still hanging on that, um, to get back with you, but I, I think we're gonna start to see some major, uh, noticeable improvements in each, each week now. Okay? Anything else? Okay, going on to, uh, this place, new business, we have motor fuel claims, the amount eleven thousand, five hundred and two dollars and thirty-four cents, what's your pleasure? Motion by Alderman Cincilla, second, second by Alderman Rambill, discussion, roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Husa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
Motion carries. This time I'd ask for a motion to go on executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, workers' compensation, property acquisition, and I don't know if it's transfer of property or not, but I know.
So moved, your honor.
Motion by Alderman, Rambill, second by Alderman Wigginton, any discussion, all in favor of, uh, signify by approving that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.